We are live.
Okay, good evening, folks. Call a meeting to order. And we'll start with the roundtable. Roundtable introductions. On my left is a town clerk, Joanne Perry. Town manager, Sandy Collins. Councillor Paul. Councillor Perry. Councillor Lynch. Councillor Kelly. Councillor Arnold. Deputy Mayor Saunders. And your truly Doug Churchill. Mayor. We'll start our business with the minutes of the regular meeting of August the 20th. Twenty-four. Move, move on. Second.
Second.
Craig and Richard. All in favor? Ready? This is the meeting of August 26th at 7:30 PM. Anything arising from that meeting?
Fifteen that come up later on.
Yeah, those come up.
Okay.
Anything else? Number 11, snow clearing relates to think the town managers, town clerks still working on the...
Yes, we are. We're going back through some documentation and we'll be ready for a meeting soon.
Anything else arising? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the streetlight committee meeting of August the 26th. Need a motion to adopt, please. Opened by Craig. Okay. Councillor Paul, Councillor Arnold. All in favor? Everybody? There is two recommendations there. I think we can handle both of them in one motion. One is in town... The first one is Townview Drive, based on the current arrangement of the streetlights. The committee recommends not installing an additional light. I guess they're closer together than you'd expect. And the number two, Riverside Road, there are currently no streetlights on this road. There is one occupied property with a second one under construction. The committee recommends that a streetlight be installed on an existing power line pole located approximately at the distance in the road. So these are the two recommendations from the streetlight committee. I need a motion to adopt. Second by Craig. Second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Ready for question? All in favor? Everybody?
Oh, correction, Mr. Mayor. It's from River View.
Was that Riverside?
No, it's a typo in a minute.
Oh, okay.
It says here Riverside Road, it's River View. That's off the bank of the road.
Okay, that's off the bank of the road. So that's River View, not Riverside. Sorry about that. The Little Dangeo Council meeting of September the 3rd at 7:00 PM. Motion to adopt the minutes, please. Move. Councillor Perry, second. Councillor Arnold. All in favor? Everybody? Councillor Paul, yes. Anything arising? It's everybody, sorry. Anything arising from those minutes? Again, this was a council meeting and we looked at the options for opening the arena. The discussion around there. So these are all accepted. Is there any discussion?
The meeting with the user groups.
Yeah, September 21st, a minute, sorry.
Minutes are coming up tonight. Anything arising? We've moved into the council meeting of September the 3rd at 8:05. Motion to adopt, please. Councillor Arnold, second. Councillor Lynch. All in favor? Everybody? This dealt, of course, with the vandalism in the brick building. And the resulting information that came out of that. So there was four youth involved and so on. Anything arising from those minutes? I don't know. Is there an update on anything? Because there was a request for letters and so on.
Right, so there's one in correspondence. The first letter we received since that time, we've received letters from all four. Now, actually, just recent today, there were two others that came in, presented letters to our Recreation Director. Based on their ages and the situation, I think that's probably appropriate enough that they've spoken directly to her. And those other three, the remaining three letters will be in for next council meeting. But all have come in and apologized and then written letters with regards to the no trespass order. That was a little bit more difficult to try to obtain. So it has been dealt with with the RCP and we understand from a conversation today that that individual is only permitted up to the reference during school hours and all in attendance with a class.
Anything else arising from those minutes? Questions? Okay, then we'll move to the Public Works meeting of September 10th at 1:00 PM. Move, move on. Second. Councillor Perry, Councillor Kelly and Councillor Terry. And again, oh, sorry. All in favor? Everybody? And there's one recommendation from that meeting. This is whether or not to supply water and sewer service to... Or how we would provide water and sewer service to Gordon's Farm property. And I'll read the recommendations. Based on the information available, that being there is a six-inch sewer line and a one-inch water line coming into Alexander Bay Lines Club. Committee recommends allowing the Gordon's permission to hook into the service. This could be done or would be done only after the executive of the Lines Club were consulted. To dig materials and all associated costs, including the replacement of the mini ashtray removed, would be the responsibility of the Gordon's. Work is to be completed with as little disturbance as possible to the Lines Club property. The Gordon's service line is to be aside as a four-inch sewer and a three-quarter inch water. Let's... Do we have a motion to that?
Yes.
Okay.
A motion to accept a recommendation.
Yes, I mean a motion to accept a recommendation.
Just one question there. It's commercial venture there. Is that four-inch sewer line going to be able to handle that there? It's not a business, it's commercial.
Gordon to Matt, that's just again.
He's the mayor. He's checking, seeing if it's small for residential fine, but for a commercial, seeing maybe a small four inches.
That's how large we got there.
What, that's why you're on 16th there? You got 16th sewer line?
But the type of operation has to be taken into account as well.
Well, I'm not a figure, but the one they stand right around, you gotta dig a little beginning for you in the 16th line.
I think they've been... The Gordon's have been consulted. I think they, you know.
Okay, all right.
So is he a motion to accept a recommendation? I think Councillors Kelly and Councillor Saunders, Deputy Mayor Saunders. Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody? The next meeting was an outside meeting. It's the arena user groups. This is for information purposes. And we'll check if anybody with a question, if we read through. Anybody would like to... This is basically with the recommendations that were made through council. Mistaken to the user groups, of course, and they come back basically. And I think all of them that we have there come back and said, yes, they will live with what we've... Government has asked us to perform a place.
What do you mean what all the fees will say? They're more happy fees than...
Price rentals, I think.
Price rentals. Our fees.
Did we say that?
Yeah, we said there'd be no change this year. Yeah.
We got the four, right?
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, we'll move to deferred business. Anything on municipal plan amendment for Bay Cove and Sweet Apple Terrace?
Yeah, just this past, well, a couple of days ago, I guess, our land planner had sent us something saying that it's been... Because he... We had met with him a week ago, I guess, and had asked for an update. And he looked into it and came back saying there's no red flags. Everything seems to be moving through the system as it should. So, so far, so good.
Good. The next item is a letter from... It was a letter last spring, I think, from the old timers requesting the naming of the arena. Are we any closer to a realization of that? Or where do we stand with that? To make a decision on that. What does council feel?
We're sold by this in the fall.
It's fall. So fall is here. Do we want to... Want to have discussions sometime?
Yes.
I guess it'll be... We'll have a meeting afterwards. I don't know if we'll have time. Maybe we can decide then to...
He's close, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll do it then after the regular meeting. And C, the zone change requests for tower requests. Do anything new?
Yeah, we met with our land planner. That was the meeting I referred to previously. Discussed that with him and I've gone back to the owner of our requested and asked him some follow-up questions. Just basically, I want to make sure what the rezone captures everything that's going to happen and what is happening. So I'm just working back and forth now with the owner of that. So when we do the land rezone, it's on property and includes everything. So we're not back at the table again in the years. Yeah.
A letter from Monita Short, Anglebrook Road cleanup.
Yeah, I spoke to Mrs. Short earlier this week or late last week. And I guess I went over some of the history with that particular property as it's not the first time this has been brought up. I talked to her some of the progress that was made a few years back, five or six years ago with regards to current breaks and some other things, acknowledging there's still some issues here. However, as we had discussed before, the homeowner isn't in the province right now. So it makes things a little bit more difficult. Also, the fact that sometimes what appears to be an eyesore necessarily doesn't mean we can go in there and force someone to clean it up. So I explained to her the difficulty and the complications around it and some of the history. And she seemed all right. And I said, there's, you know, something we'll continue to work on, not only this property, but all of her properties in town that her issues brought forward. So hopefully, we can make some more progress. But she was... I think she was on the response.
Okay, the next three items that I think we've already dealt with. An email from Paul Hart and the streetlight in Terreduwe. We just dealt with. Email from Robert Diane Gordon, who are the sewer company dealt with. And the email from Pete Downs on the streetlight of River View Road. So with that, we'll move to the permits. And we have an application, permit application from Peter and Michelle Mercer, 86 to 88 River Side Road East. Permit council is net and we have a recommendation. Before you start, if everybody had a chance to have a look at the application, because the permit committee thought that everybody was privy to that. But you can see on the first large page, the diagram will show the property. Access from Sweet Apple Terrace, Riverside at the top, Riverside Road East. Water and sewer coming from Riverside Road East as well there. The diagram. And the property has a dwelling and a garage detached. Okay? The permit committee meant and the decision was, recommendation of the permit committee was that the advocate from Peter and Michelle Mercer to be approved for aisles and rags at 86, 88 Riverside Road East. Water and sewer to be connected to Riverside East and driveway access to Sweet Apple Terrace. As a result of the ongoing zone change to the area at the end of Sweet Apple Terrace, snow clearing for the remainder of this street from Pikes Row up to the end past the center will be included during regular snow clearing operations. So I'd like to make that a motion. So move. The second by Councillor Kelly. Any discussion? Do we... Is there anything that town manager would like to add to that? Or are you... I don't know. Okay. All right. Ready for question? All in favor? Everybody? Thank you. So we're down to... Reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Okay, back in the first item, back in late August, we had a water break on North Shore during the fixed repair. Some of the material used for attaching pipes to one another seemed to... Anyways, it got into the water line. As a result, it went into a gentleman's house and created some issues with his faucets and some of his equipment and his valves in his home. Result was that he had to get a local plumber in to get those things fixed. A faucet had to be replaced as well as a couple of valves. The labor was $241. The remainder of 601, which was a total, was perhaps including a faucet. So $601.37 is what this gentleman is looking to be reimbursed for the damage that was caused by Public Works fixing the pipe and as a result of something going sideways. And from speaking to Public Works and in my short experience here, I've never heard anything of the sort happening before in Norhead Day. It's just one of those freak accidents that happened and a little bit of this blue compound come into the line, got into his valve and so on and so forth. So it was clearly our issue. The gentleman brought in his valve and showed that it had been gummed up with this material. I spoke to Public Works. They acknowledged the fact that they don't understand really how it got in there. But they acknowledged that it is the compound they were using. So this gentleman is looking to be reimbursed $601.37.
I'll move. Moved by Councillor Paul, second. Councillor Arnold. Then we pay the bill. Any discussion? Ready for a question? All in favor? Everybody? Okay.
Okay, secondly, MCWs are out now, I guess, the applications. So we need to wrap our heads around what our next applications will be and what we will be applying for and our priorities. So I'd like to be on the setup meeting, probably have that discussion in the next coming days, weeks.
Okay. What's a good time? You want to do it on the off week, next Wednesday night, you said?
We don't the application idea.
I think it's the end of November, I believe it is. Yeah, we got some time, but...
Okay, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
We better get a problem with next Wednesday night. So we off night then, next Wednesday at what, 7:00, 7:30? 7:00? 7:00 o'clock. Okay, so we'll do it next Wednesday night at 7:00 o'clock.
Okay, next up, fall cleanup week. As you know, spring cleanup was early because of COVID. Sorry, it was late. And now we're into the time where we generally do fall cleanup. We've had a number of calls, people looking for an update. So what I would propose, I'm speaking to Public Works and what would work for them, the week of October 20th to 23rd, which is the week after Thanksgiving, I believe it is. And as in other cleanups, we go out to tender for a tandem tandem to help accommodate that, right?
Okay, so it just follows the same rules procedure we always did, I guess, no new. Consensus, I guess, or do we need a motion? I guess consensus will do that we...
No. We're going to hire.
We're going to hire, okay, so we need a motion. Councillor Saunders, second. Councillor Lynch, all in favor? Everybody?
Well, remember, we probably remember the chat we had about replacing the chiller. And of course, we weren't able to get that done this season because of delays and COVID and shipping from the States and all that type of thing. So that'll be done the next offseason. But part of that, I was hoping to get done, the detection system, the gas detection system for CO2. We had that conversation with some Tom and Tom. And there's a need to get it done. There was some back and forth before with some contractors and some bad information. And, you know, the story was all over the place with regards to whether we need a $250 detector or a $15,000 detector. So I've been working on that for the last number of months of working with her, consulting with her hard for the chiller replacement. We were hoping to get perhaps envelope those two things together in our gas tax, the chiller and the gas detection, because gas detection is needed. But now I'm wondering, I'd like to be able to do the gas detection so it's ready for this season, considering the arena is going to be open. It's estimated that the gas detection would be $15,000. So those are all the CO2 detection devices, as well as an additional $5,000 to $10,000 for the dockwork ventilation. So if you folks are familiar, there's initially, there are two vents on either side of the arena on either end. One is still working and the other one is in behind where the cafeteria was later added on and built on. That vent is actually not operational at this time. So there has to be an extension of dockwork coming from that vent through the ceiling of the cafeteria out into the main portion of the arena. So when those gas detectors are working as they should, when the CO2 reaches a certain level, it won't be a danger level, but it would be pre-danger level. Those ventilation systems will cut in and suck all the CO2 out. And people using the arena wouldn't be any the wiser because there'd be no danger. It would be taken care of before it reached that level. If, for example, those ventilation systems didn't work and it wasn't able to suck it out, that's when those detectors then will reach the danger level, would sound an alarm and you would empty the arena. So on a proper functioning ventilation system and detection system, you would never hear those alarms go off because the ventilation would take care of the problem before it became an issue. So I'd like to be able to go ahead and through gas tax, that's where we were going for the chiller. But instead of doing it all together, I'd like to do the gas detection now, the chiller in the offseason. So you're looking at, as I said, $15,000 approximately for the detector and $5,000 to $10,000 for the dockwork. So you could be looking at upwards of $25,000 to have it installed.
We can use gas tax for that.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I guess, again, we need a motion. Then we have further discussion? Okay, Chantelle and...
Oh, sorry. Do you want to ask a question? Okay.
What, is there other arenas that have this system now?
Yes.
Name?
Yeah, so it was a directive sent out by government last year. There was an issue in St. John's where sand bouldering was left running and CO2 when people got sick and whatever. So that probably won't attention to it. So since that time, there's been a whole lot of talk. But it was first when arenas started waiting in this water, getting these gas detection systems in place. Some were going to get residential gas detection systems. Some were going to get proper ones, which I'm proposing we get here. So at that point, I didn't know whether we needed the full MRT or something smaller. So through a JIS interview and through talking to our consultant, who's done this in other arenas, he said, this is what you need and this is what he estimates it costs to be. So, yeah, I've seen his plan and the number of detections, detectors and whatnot. It'll be done properly and up to stuff.
So we had a motion to go with that. And you second that, Lynch? Councillor Lynch will second. Councillor Perry's motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody? Okay, good.
Just want to give everyone a heads up, the trail study, we had talked about the one that runs along the river. We're all familiar with that, I guess. And we had Greenleaf, a consultant, Poirier, had done some work on that, which we had provincial office funding to do. That study is now back, so it's only, you know, I don't have a copy up here, but there's a copy in my office, if anyone would interest in seeing it. Just pop by and I can make that available. And finally, actually, there's one other, a site-specific plan needs approval till every year in order for our Public Works to pick up at Grant's Pit, salt and sand. They need to have a safety plan done because you're going in on a provincial government site. So that would include certification for our workers, inspections done on the vehicles, all of those types of things. So we're working through having all of those done. There's been some challenges with getting training because some of it's being done virtually and some of it being on our site and all that thing. But those will all be done. We need it, we need this done, obviously, before we go pick up salt and sand, which hopefully won't be next week, but it couldn't, it could be nearby. So anyways, I just wanted to get, we need a motion in order to sign that off to say.
Okay, Councillor Kelly and Councillor Arnold. Who the work carry carry out. Certification? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Next, Justin Marsh lives at the end of Willow Ridge Road. There was some, remember, there was issues on Harris and Sparkses that we resolved with regards to council purchasing pieces of land in order to make the roads work because we're going to be having asphalt put on them. Willow Ridge is in a similar situation in that Mr. Marsh's land actually comes out into a portion of the road. Takes up a portion of the road going upward, joins it to his driveway. Before you get to his driveway, the corner of his land actually comes out a few feet into the actual roadway. So it would be nice, we talked about maybe swimming the road a little bit to the left, but then we'd be into issues of private land ownership out of the left. So from talking to the engineers, they said it'd be best to sort this out now so that road were ever extended. For one, we can get it paved now. We can only pave what we own. And any future development up the road, if that ever happens, of course, you could then continue to grow it on. Right now, we're jutting into, and the current road falls on private land. So I was going to suggest that we treat this like the other two instances where $500 payment was made, aligned with the legal fees paid as well. I would say that the individual is in here and talked about if there was some willingness to do a trade-off for bringing the pavement up towards his driveway, he'd be willing to do, but I think that would set a dangerous precedent when you start paving driveways and whatnot. And I explained that to him at home, he understood completely. But my recommendation would be to offer the same as was offered to the other two.
I'll move. Another second. Moved by Councillor Perry, second by Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, we moved into roundtable. Councillor Paul, anything to...
Yeah, just a couple of things here. Why are we in our tender for a tandem tandem? What is the reason beyond that?
In years past, we've had a smaller truck, but it takes two lines. Because, of course, it only takes two-thirds the capacity or a third of the capacity. It all depends on what size of dump truck you're using. So it's more trips to the dump. Public Works has found in past, in recent past years, that they were able to do it much more efficiently with a tandem tandem fitting more material in each trip.
Okay, I don't know if man ocean, but in the last couple of few weeks here, Davis Scott has just for tractor trailer type dump, which is solving ash dump river, which is capacity is even bigger than the, you know, the tandem tandem. So why not include that into the tender form so he gets a chance to bid on it better just that goes through one guy and can use a tandem tandem?
Yeah, I go with tender.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Why don't we include that in a tractor trailer, more capacity in our tender form so that the guy gets a chance to bid on it better and just go onto the one guy who we know, the only one I'm telling you, tandem tandem. And now he's the, he can put his price in, but it gives us some competition. Plus, we got more carrying capacity, so the less trips to the dump.
So I don't know with regards to that trailer. I haven't seen it, but I know it's a large trailer. I'm not sure practically how well it could go into side streets and maneuver. But that's the question I can certainly ask.
Hey, Public Works can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. It will save us money, probably.
Yeah, even if they show you hard eyes aside and save us money, but I know you for that.
Never quite, because I'm down here in the boot house. On a normal condition, when I hop in here, I can't see nobody that is sitting in the gallery. And now it's that most all the rest of the team, looking at the back of the copper falls it, Sandy did, and half the line is pulled down. Sorry, we...
Did you have something, a point you wanted to make? Was it bought to the rest of the county?
No. No, next time, rearrange this a little better.
Okay, we'll try it.
Right, that's the only question. No, yeah, I thought to be clear on what was said.
Before you delay, come over because the speaker is afraid to go.
Okay. What I said was, we go up for a tandem tandem. And the reason we go for a tandem tandem drop is because the carrying capacity, which is better to the dump than, you know, bigger load here for probably cheaper. So now, Davis Scott just be for a tractor trailer, which is twice the capacity almost as a tandem tandem. So why don't we include that in a tender form so this guy can have a chance to bid on this well. If he don't fulfill it, it's going to go down in town with a tandem tandem. And he's going to, he's going to take for sure.
And we said, I think the consensus around the room was, we'll let the people outside, our outside workers, Matt and the group of boys to decide if that's practical explanation.
I guess that makes sense to town manager on all the streets.
Town manager.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, can I suggest I first speak to Public Works to see if it was practical? If that isn't, I'd probably speak then to Davis Scott to see if he's available.
Sure.
And if those two things are, maybe then you could go to tender for a tandem tandem or larger.
Yeah, there you go. Sure. Send me up.
The other thing was, I talked to town manager and there is a question came up a couple of times about some JCP program available for trails, which is not necessarily going to any trail riders to upgrade the trail going over the ridge. And there is apparently some money available according to what I'm hearing from RMHA.
JCP funding, yeah.
JCP funding, right. So could the town apply for some like funding to upgrade the trail going over there? Because it is a lot of taxpayers, the capital over there and the road is distinct that you have to leave here, go up TransCanada, which is not real safe, to pick up the town with landing roads to get to the cabins when they can move over the regions there. And Sandy should know that because he's been over several times, he didn't know cabin there. But to upgrade that road, not necessarily make it like TransCanada. Upgrade to the time for, you know, you can use it, right?
What are you talking about?
From Future Street, over to the bottom of the iron. From Future Street, over to the bottom of the iron. You don't have to go on a road like TransCanada, but get rid of some of the rocks to make it passable, you know, for skidoo. And the thing is, is not use the groomer over that bunch in the winter pile. Unless there's a lot of snow, because they said there's too many rocks in the trail, big rocks, which are ruined the groomer. So we got to remove those big rocks. At least we can use the, make it accessible, right? And this is for taxpayers, not just for everybody.
The problem that I see with it is that it is for a small group of people that we're going to be doing this. You know, most of the time when we get involved with...
Oh, because how small group of people are there?
Most of the time we get involved with doing a JCP, it's for the benefit of the community. Now, we're talking about doing it for a group of skidooers or over in a particular area.
There's not just a few of your area, all of you from Mackles on the weekends. You get as many of you from Mackles over there as you get locals. They get understeal, where do they go? They're sitting on the animal town, or they go over there. They meet with their friends over there and whatever, and parties and wherever they do. I mean, just enjoy the scenery. So it's a town, you venture the old town, I mean, it's numbers, I bet the numbers of students in this town, you'd be surprised how many bodies students are in this town.
Have you approached the skidoo groups, the trail riders, to see if they would sponsor? Somebody has to sponsor a project, I mean, that's the thing, right?
Well, some said we've been a trail rider before and getting trail over here, but it hasn't too good, so.
My question to it is that if we, and I'm not against it, but if we, if we go over this program to do the trail like that, then would that be a program to do the trail along with Station Pond?
Station Pond?
Don't program Station Pond, the cabins up there, we all have the same, same...
Sure, no question.
But then, I'd have to get another program to do, probably not Station Pond, because you just see that road up there, but other areas where there are cabins, you'd like to go over a program to make sure there's a good trail to those cabins.
Perfect, perfect. If you go over, he's going JCP rooms, we'll keep the barn room.
I don't think we should get involved in that.
There's a significant one that decided, JCP.
Well, you get so much JCP though.
JCP already have...
You don't need it in labor.
Top up, that one is.
But that's for labor.
Yes.
Not equipment?
No, it's a small, small portions, yeah.
Materials.
You get ten percent JCP.
Well, I'm understanding the copper policy, if you have big rocks, the man might move you.
No, he, listen, two neighbors and equipment, and looking for siding.
Yeah, but where are you going to get the equipment? They won't, they'll see, the way is the program...
You can't, JCP tells us that for any equipment?
Yes. But then... JCP is for labor with ten percent for materials. They won't hire a tractor to go over there with two men.
So there's no money for equipment, only for labor, is that what you said?
Basically.
Maybe a very small portion for it. But it's labor intensive because it's about getting people topped up on guys. So it's all the big dollars, man dollars, not equipment.
And you get about ten percent. If the program is thirty thousand dollars, you'll get three thousand for materials.
Yes.
That's the way it works.
I can't argue because I don't know.
Something that we need to check out.
I applied for them, but I was in town.
I thought my duty, you break the council. That was different, it's another thing.
Said I don't fight for them, God, I couldn't use it because it couldn't work.
So that's good, that's good. I go back to councillor Perry's point. In the meantime, I'm not sure if there's something we should get into or something that we can certainly think about. But I'm not sure if there's something we should get into in terms of doing individual trails, you know, unless you've got a plan to do them all or whatever.
I just thought that my duty as a councillor to bring to table, how do I...
If you had a group who were vested in that area, a group over there of cabin owners, you said you're going to go to our NHA and look for a JCP and see if you can get some cutting and some work on some laboring, then I think a JCP might very well work for you. And I don't want to hog the conversation. Anybody got any other talk before we move on?
The reason that I mentioned going to town, I discussed it with Sandy earlier. And if you go with a group and you get into work with conversation, getting into all, all you know, you've got in regulations, whereas the town's got these regulations at place. That was my only thing.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure you can do that anymore, you know.
I don't know. But like I said, my duty is to bring it to council and how you deal with this.
Yeah, well, you know. I'm sure we'll hear about it again, so.
Okay.
Anything else, oh, sorry, councillor Perry?
I had a visit from an individual yesterday morning. Yesterday morning?
Yeah.
Regarding the sewer drainage station we have on Station Pond. Other than anybody else had a visit?
I think most people have had a conversation.
So I sat down and chatted with the individual. His points as to why he thinks it should be open. It's a good, it's a good point. And I explained with my, with my limited knowledge as to why it was closed. I'm still not totally cleared myself as to why. I know it was closed because of COVID, but while we kept it closed, I'm still not totally sure of the reason why. So I told my friend on the council and see my other individuals at council.
Most of us, I think, have had that conversation. I think it's an issue that needs to, again, a thorough look at. And I think it comes, I mean, this is obviously we're not going to do any better now. But I think it comes spring when people start moving in. I think it's an issue again that we need to take a serious look at and see what we can do. If intact, there is any way we can get it open.
No, sir, well, you know, he can't, same guy came in as well. And so some time ago, I mentioned to Will over at Trill Young Net here. And Will said he'd look into it. And I mentioned to him a couple of days ago or yesterday or day before. And I understood from him that he was going to have an application in for permit at the committee. He asked when the meeting was. And I said it was now and he's, I understood it, maybe it didn't have time, it was only yesterday. But he said he's putting in an application in to town to put a station in here because it would go well with his business. He's got the easy, the gas and everything.
Perfect, right? Well, maybe that'll, maybe that'll work too. But again, like I said, it's not a time now.
Well, what they say to him is that you have to consult public works to see if it's feasible to look into the system, right?
Town manager will look after all that.
Yes, that's right.
Had to look after your open, no?
Yes, that's right. I placed my net to him, right? So no application given yet?
Yeah, we used to have one day over again, by the gas station.
Rogers, isn't it?
Rogers, yeah. They have it here for years and they used to charge and they come back in there. Dump your sewer and pay for it, what?
Let's wait and see how it develops. Because like I said, we've got a little time before we look at it come spring. Because I don't think anybody's any, uh, need to look at it. Yeah, let's put on deference, that's sure, it's a good point.
And if I told them, I didn't, nobody will do that.
No. I think everyone is, a number of people are...
He must not be.
Anything else, councillor Perry?
No.
Councillor Edge? Councillor Kelly?
What? No, I haven't got anything to say.
Councillor Arnold? Deputy Mayor?
Well...
Okay, I have one quick item. The Department of Health, well, the central health, I guess, is looking at some consultation. I had a call this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to tell the town manager, I've heard about this. But they're looking to do some consultations with the stakeholders in the East Port Go Down area. And they have a meeting set up for early in October. It's going to be a virtual meeting. And they'd like a discussion of health issues that concern people, obviously, in our case, Go Over Town. They've asked me to attend that meeting, which I told them I would do. But if any of you have an issue related to health and health care and, of course, mental health and all the other things attached to it, our clinic and services and all that, then let me know and I could certainly bring those concerns forward at the meeting. So it'll be sometime, I think it's around the October eighth. It'll be a virtual meeting.
I always did bring up, I went away, I was seven, going out, I stand up once, baking in the clinic. What are you going to do now with the coal, or coming down the way to come down the... It was amazing, you're like, you're scribbled over, you didn't get stand up and make it to the park. But I'm in, there was several seats there making in the William Room. I don't understand why.
I know that we are bad. In the conversation today, there were a number of issues around COVID, of course, that will be, you know, obviously after discussion. So now, whether or not there'll be anything that will come out of it or not. But we, there's certainly one of those things that will be discussed for sure. Okay, then if anybody else has got anything that comes to your mind later on, you certainly can mention it to me. We'll move then to correspondence. And the first item is a request from Ethylxy Newland Labrador for donation. I says your donation, you get it with a donation if you follow Newland at the Labrador, it stays right here in the province. And I don't know if we've made donations before to Ethylxy. Never? What does council wish? I guess we did, what did we do the other day was... Got any money left there in other accounts?
We're getting pretty tight now.
I know, I got a daughter with Ethylxy.
Getting pretty tight, but you know, there's always a few dollars for certain groups.
Should we move that and pay him hundred dollars? Hundred dollars? Moved by councillor Paul, seconded by councillor Saunders? Any discussion? All in favor? It's everybody. Okay, the next item then is a letter from Kevin Blackmore of the Diamond House Financial Overview and Progress. It's a little bit of an update as to where they are in terms of income and expenses. They mentioned that their net profit for last year, I think, for the end of the year in 2020, March 31st, was nine hundred and three dollars, which is very good. As you can see from their comments, Kevin's comments, they're pretty good because they haven't always been able to break even. So this year, they did have almost a thousand dollars to do it. So that's for information purposes. The next one, a little more detail, again, from Kevin Blackmore. And again, it's about the Diamond House. I guess if you look right in the middle of the page, they're asking, they'd like to open the facility. They have a successor, we have possible users. And they mentioned two groups. And then a little further, it says in the first instance, number one, we propose that the user group may be able to take care of cleaning as in protocol now in churches. Each member would bring disposable disinfectant wipe cleaner on sheer. A one or two members from the group would have to further be responsible wiping down counters and surfaces, doors and doorknobs. The second group says in the second instance, with varied members, there would be a responsibility for cleaning. To that end, we have requested the town providers would clean act to aid us. So what they're asking for is if council would provide, I think it's twice, if you look at the last paragraph, second last paragraph, if we could have an agreement from council that our facility would receive a thorough cleaning twice a week, I would be able to see the facility vacuumed and used and thereby earning enough to pay utilities. That would mean cleaning the chairs and surfaces, door, doorknobs and a thorough washroom cleaning and a general vacuuming lot and lock down when necessary. Now, of course, we have opened the fire hall. And our last town manager, perhaps our town clerk, has updated on what the protocol is there.
What we've done with the fire hall, of course, initially it was just open for fire in themselves. We have one janitor instead, janitor, so our maintenance person. And she does the fire hall once a week. Then we were approached by one of the users asking if he can go in for these classes twice a week. So we looked at it and said, could they pay a ten dollar an hour rental fee directly to the fire department? So we said, well, we have to send the janitor in for cleaning. We're going to get charged for cleaning because someone had bought the normal once a week cleaning. So we agreed that we would rent the property to him for fifty dollars for the hour, forty dollars for the cleanup. Ten dollars, then we'll go to a fire department town for rest, help offset janitor's costs. We've had one more person come back and want to use it again. She's going to try it with this fifty dollar rental to see if it's feasible for her to continue with that space. And then, of course, that means we have to have our janitor in again. So there's a couple of issues with this is the janitor, for one, is a member of our union, which means technically the job would be hers if it's for cleaning. The other is I don't know if the Diamond House would be prepared to pay fifty dollars an hour or forty dollars an hour towards cleaning. And the bigger issue is, I don't know if our one janitor has enough hours to cover up because she works full time during this summer and spring, summer, early fall. Then she goes on shorter hours and she prefers to do that. So I don't know if she would be interested in working two or three hours every day, right? So there's a few issues. But I will suggest maybe that council will defer this request. And when the arena gets something wrong and we see exactly how many hours we're going to need of her there and the fire hall is more situated, then we might be able to get a better feel for how many hours she's going to need. And of course, we can make the district more aware of the extra cost that would have to be incurred. Because this is a town only facility, the same as the fire hall, right?
And it's not, it's not a fee that Diamond House would have to pay. It's a fee that the users of the Diamond House would have to pay them and they would collect to pay the town for the cleaning. So you're using the same regulations, basically, for the two facilities, the fire hall and the Diamond House, which can hold all but the town and run by different groups.
Do we have a number of people who we call in when she's, she can't, as soon as she can handle whatever? But I know she's union, whatever.
In the winter season, we do.
Yes, but, yeah, I mean, like, if she comes in, we're going to pay her time and a half, right? We're paying. Will we? No, all free time? Okay, well, in that case, if she's unable or don't uncover me, we can call that secondary.
Well, these are, these are things we can look at when we figure out what, what amount of time she will be needed. We're not quite there yet.
That'd be up to her to let us know if she can do it or not. If she can't do it, we can call somebody else. Probably it would make a few other few.
Well, if the town is willing to incur additional wage expense, which has not been budgeted, then yes.
Yeah, because we got to pay them.
You have to pay the wage, right?
But now, they're paying for the houses that they're using. But can Diamond House make a year's of pay so that they can include that in their... Yeah, they can use it in their fee, right?
Sure. Okay, so we'll defer it if we can, if we have consensus that we will defer it until we see what the janitor times are and then if we can't, if that doesn't work out, we can try to look for some alternative, I guess.
Yeah, we'll process that.
So I see. The next item is the RCMP monthly policing report, for your viewing pleasure. There's hope. The next one is a letter, an email from Garrett South, the Blackie Dog on Jolly View Drive. I think the town manager has had some correspondence for that.
Yeah, this has been an ongoing issue for some time. I spoke to the dog owner, or at least the dog owner's father, unless you're exactly how that works. But anyways, one of the persons who owns the house I spoke to and had told him that I heard multiple complaints with regards to the dog parking from the lifted on. And he didn't, he didn't disagree with me. He acknowledged that the dog spent much time out there. So I encouraged him, if he could, to bring a dog inside, do those types of things, whatever it would take to get the dog to stop parking. So as to not disrupt his neighbors. It seemed like a number of weeks after we had that chat, things had gotten better, improved. That was from speaking to some people in the area up there. But then it seems to, as this gentleman said, it seems to have reverted back to the previous situation. So my understanding is that there has been, actually, I won't say that. I think probably at this point, it would be treated, it should be treated as a disturbance, I think. I don't know what other steps besides talking. We, of course, don't have enforcement officers. The RCMP now under new Animal Control Act, the RCMP is the go-to as opposed to SPCA or whatever the case is. So I think maybe that's the only route to go now if we wanted to make it more of a disturbance to public peace, those types of things, and contact the RCMP. I don't know what else the town could do at this point, as we don't have, we don't have a hammer to enforce it as such.
So we have a consensus that we would have a discussion, the town manager have a discussion with the RCMP and see if there is a route that we can follow it.
Yeah.
And maybe if I can add, perhaps, because I've had multiple conversations with the dog owner and we've had some success on other issues, other unrelated issues. Perhaps before I take that route, I can speak to the homeowner again, just saying this is what I've left with. So, you know, again, we had some success before with past issues, perhaps. perhaps, you know, we can give that one last, last go before taking it to the, the RCMP.
Uh, so everybody's okay with that? Okay, you have an agreement? Okay, then the next item is, uh, the letter from the Royal Newfoundland Constabulary 30th Anniversary Prime Prevention Guide, focusing on child abuse awareness, I don't know if we've been involved with their magazine before, no, never. It is a local association, of course, it's, you know, the RMC or in St. John's Corner Brook, in Labrador, of course, but, uh, not so much visible around here, what does council wish? They're asking for, uh, three hundred and fifty, I think, for a quarter page, roughly eighty-five dollars and five hundred dollars, the shortest, smallest one is two hundred and fifty, I'll want ten for the page, two hundred dollars, these are your options, I think on the last page.
Fire.
All right?
Fire.
No wish to do anything with it now? Okay, consensus, right? We have that on before. The Eastport Peninsula, National Eastport Peninsula Agricultural Exhibition is organizing an exhibition parade at 1:00 PM on October 10th, and, uh, they'd like to know if anybody would like to get involved in the parade, that's for information purposes, I don't think the town has any interest, but I, I'll wait for your, um, can we, uh, you should start again.
We probably said in our town, uh, in our Facebook.
Yeah, page, because, yeah, maybe Gordon Byron or somebody would be up on to, uh, for smoke, you know. Good point, you know, we can make sure that goes off on the, uh, board, uh, board. Okay. Uh, next item is an email from Glenn Lawley, from, uh, it's a related, it's related to, uh, Saunders Cove and, uh, the area just past Derek's Parcses, um, it's road over, I think, I mean, there, the railway, the roadway needs to be cleaned up at this spot, like the, the shoulders, the rows and the side row repaired, and the guardrails and stuff, the lead that Public Works, I guess, that Public Works being, also, Kelly?
Where is the road?
Yeah, I guess that road, yeah, road over.
Matt, Matt and, uh, should they, Public Works and Boys have gotten out and looked at it, and actually has, have taken some pictures, I found out since, and look, I, I don't see where the erosion's an issue, like there is a drop off, there's support, but I don't think it's having like a lot of other places in town, I don't know if it would really, if it would really justify a guardrail, so.
Yeah, let's have a look, yeah. Okay, uh, the next item is the letter from the child who was involved in the, uh, damage at the recreation ground, I think we saw this one on Facebook, some of us, and, uh, this is the, the letter that the child wrote, the name has been eliminated, of course, for Jackie Innocence. So your information. Uh, the last, the last item was an email from the Wilderness and Ecological Reserve, the area being proposed, protected area planned for Newfoundland, it's an interesting article, it's an interesting booklet, America of All, uh, the deadlines for public consultation is tomorrow, October 1st, uh, so you may have run out of time, but, uh, in the meantime, um, there is a copy on my desk, if anybody's going to see it, uh, there's a, Sandy, there's a twelve, fifteen areas across the province?
Yeah, and as it relates to us, the nearest one is probably around Rodney Pond, up that area, there's some spots, there's nothing that impacts, definitely not within our municipal boundary, and I guess it would impact those who perhaps are looting hunting, or, or that, or may have cabin area near Rodney Pond, generally, the areas impacted are in cabin areas, are high traffic areas, but I noticed a lot of feedback from people who, uh, humped and those types of things that are impacted, so if, if you're one of those groups, you may want to have a look.
It tells you what restrictions are there, and what, uh, you know, what things will be allowed, and what things will carry out, and so on, these different areas.
Is that the one with the anniversary in the, in the?
Yeah, exactly, there's a lot of.
Okay, um, what do you mean, well, we, we'll move to the check register, a motion to accept, Councillor Lynch, second Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody? No exemption, we need a motion to adjourn, ruled second back in by Councillor Lynch, all in favor? Everybody? Thank you very much, folks.